Now welcome members from our legal fraternity, the Queensland Law Society, the Bar Association, and the Queensland Environmental Law Association. Please take your seats, we're a few minutes late. While you're taking your seats, I'll just read through the list of people here who are in this session. So from the Queensland Law Society, we've got Mr Matt Dunn, CEO, Mr Michael Connor, Chair, Mr Troy Webb, sorry, Chair Planning and Environment Law, Mr Troy Webb, Member of the Planning and Environment Law Committee, Ms Kristin, Ms Kristin Hodge, I believe Kristin is online, can you hear us Kristin? Thank you. Then the Queensland Environmental Law Association, we have got Mr Mitchell Batty. Sure, good day. And then from the Bar Association, Ms Kate Hemsworth-Smith, KC, Mr Errol Moorezone, KC. Thank you, everybody. If you would like to make an opening statement, then we will have questions for you. Thank you. Who's to go first? Kate, ladies first. Sorry, sorry Kate, just make sure you press your microphone, there should be a red light in front of it when it's on. And also when you finish, turn it off, because only a few can, a few mics can be light at one time. Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to address the committee on behalf of the Bar Association of Queensland in relation to the draft planning legislation. I will focus on the proposed amendments to the Brisbane Olympic and Paralympic Games Arrangements Act 2021, and particularly in relation to the addition of proposed new Chapter Three, Capital A-headed provisions facilitating development etcetera for the Games. The Bar Association acknowledges the purposes and objectives for the addition of this chapter, the matters that are set out in Section 53, D, Capital A of the draft legislation. And that is the timely delivery of development for or relating to authority venues, other venues and villages, and the construction of games-related transport infrastructure, as well as protecting the public interest in ensuring the state is ready to host the Games and to facilitate legacy uses of venues and villages. The authority venues are the seventeen venues listed in Proposed Schedule One along with the Games-related uses and legacy uses. The association has no submission to make on the appropriateness of those purposes or objectives, venues or uses. That is entirely a matter for government. But how those purposes are to be carried out under the draft legislation is of significant concern to the association. Primary among those is the proposal to deny access to the courts for civil proceedings in relation to development, use or activity if there is a reasonable prospect that the proceeding will prevent the timely delivery of an authority venue, other venue or village for the Games or the timely completion of games-related transport infrastructure. The provision does not simply aim to render otherwise unlawful acts lawful or to provide immunity from prosecution for what would otherwise be criminal offences. Those are dealt with Section 53, D, Capital D, One and Two, and I will come to those briefly. The truly concerning section as far as the Bar Association is concerned is Section 53 DD Subsection Three, which exists to prevent two or more private individuals, whether companies or natural persons, from suing each other. It might also extend proceedings involving the state as a litigant, but that would be incidental rather than by design. It begins with the word 'also', which rather tends to suggest that it might have been an afterthought. But it then commences and says, "A civil proceeding may not be started against a person." So it is not the case that the provision is aimed towards a summary or speedy determination of a dispute after the plaintiff has already commenced a proceeding, but to in fact stop the proceeding from being commenced in the first place, to completely oust the jurisdiction of the courts to hear and determine a private dispute, stopping a private individual from accessing the courts to resolve a private dispute with another private individual. Aside from the breathtaking dismantling of the rights of individuals, this appears very much to be a challenge to the institutional integrity of the Supreme Court by state legislation. It would be unsurprising to this committee with respect that there is High Court authority which may be called in aid of having that legislation struck down. And aside from the question of its constitutionality, when individuals are prevented from accessing independent courts and tribunals to resolve their disputes, there is a contravention of the rule of law. Now, this is not simply a theoretical construct. It has been the experience of history that when the rule of law is not present to provide a mechanism for independent resolution of disputes, humans find some other way to do it, and it is rarely peaceful. While the proposed provision has practical difficulties, which I will come to, they must not be allowed to distract from the fundamental proposition that the rule of law must not be a casualty in the battle for efficient development of Olympics infrastructure. It should be instead viewed as a key driver of it. Economic development requires the participants to have confidence in their ability to enforce contractual rights. Adherence to the rule of law, the administration of justice and the absence of graft are the hallmarks of flourishing economies, which is what this government and the people of Queensland want. Asked rhetorically, from a practical perspective, why would a company tender for a contract worth hundreds of millions of dollars if it could not enforce that contract by regular application to the courts of the jurisdiction in question? Having stated that a civil proceeding may not be commenced by a person, the provision sets out the nature of the proceedings to which it might apply. Those are proceedings in relation to the development, use or activity if there is a reasonable prospect that the proceeding will prevent the timely delivery of the venue etcetera. This leads to the practical problems with that provision. Who decides prior to the commencement of a proceeding whether a proceeding is one in relation to a development, use or activity under the Act? In relation to is a phrase of the widest import, so it will capture a lot of proceedings that might be considered prima facie incidental to the development, use or activity. And who decides prior to the commencement of the proceeding if there is a reasonable prospect that the proceeding will prevent the timely delivery of a venue? And what plaintiff will simply accept that they cannot commence the proceeding on the basis that those hazily drafted criteria might be found to exist? Those criteria can only realistically be pleaded as a defence after the claim has been regularly instituted. And the best the courts could do would be to see whether early summary determination might be appropriate. The position becomes hopelessly circular. The provision introduces two other facts for determination as part of its criteria for the application. This will expand the scope of litigation, not contract it. The Bar Association submits with the greatest respect that the provision will not achieve the purposes or objectives which it is said to be enacted. It will have the almost inevitable effect of creating more and longer litigation, rather than the opposite. There are other mechanisms which might be considered and employed to see to the efficient determination of civil cases while maintaining adherence to the rule of law. Those include fast-tracking rules of litigation for relevant proceedings, the process of disclosure of documents, which is a very large part and time-consuming part of civil litigation, to be prima facie inapplicable as or subject to application as in the federal court. Legislation promoting summary determination or guillotine orders for breach of fast-track rules and directions. For instance, non-compliance with an order results in a proceeding being dismissed, or alternatively, non-compliance results in fixed costs orders payable with a short timeframe or a defence is struck out. Mechanisms that require legislation in order to see to the timely determination of disputes. The potential also for the creation of a special Olympics list similar to the commercial list in the courts, of course, in consultation with the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court. Alternatively, the creation of a special Olympics court. There is longstanding precedent for specialist courts requiring such expedition. And one, of course, is the Queensland Court of Disputed Returns, which requires very quick disposition of its disputes, because sometimes the who-holds-government can turn on those decisions. So there are mechanisms to see to the quick resolution of disputes without actually preventing those disputes from ever being commenced in a court. I mentioned the issues with respect to Sections 53 DD One and Two. These address at some length, these are addressed in the association's written submissions. But in short, the first of these negates the application of certain legislation enacted for the benefit of the people, the environment and the economic development of Queensland. Unusually, the provision assumes that a person who it would otherwise, to whom it would otherwise apply, has acted unlawfully. It is predicated on that presumption of unlawfulness. And then it renders the contract, sorry, the conduct lawful. It deems the unlawful act to be lawful, which is a relatively astonishing thing in a piece of legislation. The purpose of this appears to be so that developments that would be subject to those acts can be fast-tracked for the Games. Again, a matter for government whether or not that occurs. But those acts are protective in nature, and given ministerial call-in powers that the government already has and the exclusion clause that exists in Section 53 EG of the draft bill, it is difficult to conjure a reason why this approach is necessary. The government already has the ability to fast-track the developments, and it has restricted judicial review of its decision to matters of jurisdictional error alone. And the immunity from prosecution for what would be contraventions of those acts? If someone causes harm, it is with respect unfathomable that they should be immune from prosecution for it. Prosecution for contraventions of those acts usually takes place well after the impugned conduct occurs, which means that the fact of a prosecution is not going to be holding up or hindering the development in question. It happens after an investigation and after the institution of proceeding, so well after the actual conduct. There is good reason why immunity from prosecution is so very rare in the legislative regime of this or other jurisdictions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Mr Dunn, would you like to make a brief opening statement?
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for inviting the Queensland Law Society to appear today. I'd like to start off by acknowledging the Terrible and the Agro Peoples as the traditional custodians of the land on which we are meeting today, and also recognise the traditional custodians throughout Queensland with respect to these matters. We recognise their continuing connection to the land and waters particularly. And it's because of this strong connection to the land that the perspectives of First Nations Queenslanders are fundamental to the purposes of the inquiry that we're dealing with today. The cultural heritage aspects of this legislation must incorporate and respect the perspectives of the traditional custodians of the land. We have provided a submission to the committee, and I won't restate our submission. We've identified a number of issues that we wanted to raise today. We're fortunate enough to be joined by Ms Kristin Hodge, our co-chair of our First Nations Legal Policy Committee. She'd be pleased to speak to proposed removal of safeguards in relation to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander cultural heritage issues relating to the Olympics and Paralympic Games developments. I'm joined by Mr Michael Connor, the Chair of our Planning Law Committee, and Mr Troy Webb from our Planning and Law Committee. They'd be pleased to answer questions on the proposed social impact and community benefit amendments, including how to progress and how the issues at hand may create uncertainty, delay and other adverse consequences. And I'd like to just briefly draw the committee's attention to our concerns with respect to the civil liability proceedings of the Brisbane Games in the Section 53 Double D Three. We've outlined some concerns with respect to how that legislation may work and the particular type of unintended consequences that the colleague at the Bar talks so elegantly about that may be hindered, types of actions that relate to safety or the ability to enforce contracts or recover costs or other types of uses, and there are other submitters who have gone into that territory. One way that we submitted in our suggestion or in our submission that we could address with that is to give the power, the court the power to require leave, to bring proceedings in a circumstance, and then give some relevant considerations to the court. So the court maintains control, the court maintains its sovereignty, but also can deal with valid matters that need to be progressed in order to perform rights. We would take any questions and try and assist the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Dunn. Go to Mitchell.
Sorry, your microphone there. The Queensland Environmental Law Association is grateful for the opportunity to present this afternoon. Similar to the other bodies here this afternoon, its submissions are non-political and are based on process. The association supports the submissions that have been made by both the Queensland Law Society and the Queensland Bar Association. In the interest of time, I won't repeat what has been said, but effectively, the submission of QUEELA is focused on Paragraph Five A of its written submission, which is the proposed introduction of a community benefit system by requiring a proponent to conduct a social impact assessment and enter into a community benefit agreement with the relevant local government before lodging particular development applications. The reasons that QUEELA is set out in its submission, its position is that that amendment is not in the best interest of the community and ought to be changed. Other than that, we're content to rely on the opening of the other two associations that have presented this afternoon.
Thank you, Mitchell. Go to the member for Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. Kate, I might start with yourself. You've outlined some really quite outstanding technical flaws actually in the bill. Were you consulted on the bill prior to its introduction? And is there any way to make those particular sections workable in your view?
Prior to the bill's introduction, no, we were not consulted about the draft amendments. But we were consulted in a timely way after the bill was presented. In relation to mechanisms for making it workable, yes, we do believe that there are mechanisms that make it workable, but one of them is not to simply prevent civil proceedings from actually being commenced. The Chief Executive of the Law Society has raised a point of a potential aspect being the seeking of leave to commence proceeding. That is a type of proceeding that, sort of pre-proceeding, that does exist in a number of different facets of litigation. So it's another way that could be added to the armament of ensuring timely dispositions of this. But as I say, the key to this is ensuring that, in our position with respect, is to ensure that the courts are armed with legislation and support in it, legislation that gives them the ability to actually effectively fast-track litigation once it has commenced. The clearer the legislation, the less likely there will be extraneous litigation about it.
Thank you, Kate.
I was going to clarify something. Just if those recommendations are in the body of your submissions and whether that would sort out the example that you raised around the lack of confidence from proponents in wanting to bid for work without having the ability to seek civil remedies?
Sorry, if I understand the query correctly, we've set that out as a risk. And as soon as you stop people litigating, that risk subsists, and there is very little that litigation can actually do to stop that risk. So we would say that as it currently stands, that provision at the very least needs to be omitted entirely, with a different focus being on the practical aspects of fast-tracking the litigation, so that that confidence can be retained in people who would bid for contracts. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. We'll go to the member for Cook.
Kate, the alternatives you talk about may require legislative and regulatory reform, change and so on. So bills will have to be prepared before the House, there'll be time delays. But then they would have to be retrospective, because a lot of these obligations and liabilities are arising now. And there's going to be a lot of people very upset that we'll be list jumping. So is that really a practical outcome where it's not just creating the same quagmire that we've got now?
There's a bit in that question with respect, and all very sensible points to be added. The first is in relation to having litigation move quickly through the courts, that would be answered with the appeal to having a separate list or a separate indeed court established in relation to Olympics proceedings, but that is a matter for resourcing. The more that is invested in those aspects of the proceedings, the faster they will go. Has been my experience as a barrister in all areas of practice. But particularly in relation to the issue of queue jumping, properly resourced, the courts are able to see to all of the obligations to the people of Queensland, not just those derived from Olympics Games litigation. The other point that you made about new legislation and retrospectivity, this provision doesn't exist in the legislation at the moment, so there is no problem about people entering into contracts as the matter stands. They can still have access to the courts. So in relation to the further steps, they would arise and could be legislated to be clear that they arise from the point of the dispute occurring and apply to the dispute as opposed to applying to the underlying contract. I am perhaps trying to draft legislation as I speak, but...
So you're suggesting that your alternatives all exist within the current legislative regime? There wouldn't be any requirements to amend the Judicial Review Act or anything else to bring that about?
There is, sorry. The fast-track through the courts, however that mechanism might be achieved, or as the Law Society has suggested with respect to a leave proceeding, that would require legislation or regulation or a practice direction. So it would require further steps for fast-tracking. The judicial review, the restrictions on judicial review for only errors of, sorry, jurisdictional error exists, I think it is 53 EG is the new legislation, but that exists, that provision is already there. It was just that Part Four of Chapter Three is to be omitted by the draft bill. It exists in that part, and it's been replicated in the new part. So it already exists. That is the limitation on judicial review for jurisdictional error only already exists.
Thanks, Kate. I'll go to the member for Aspli for the next question.
Thank you, Chair. To each of the three organisations appearing, I do believe that the bill contains significant, oh sorry, sufficient legislative checks to ensure that Olympics infrastructure decisions are evidence-based, transparent and appropriately open to public scrutiny.
Sorry, was the question, do we consider that it has sufficient checks?
Yep. As it's drafted.
The bill itself as it's drafted or the extent legislation?
The bill as it's drafted.
The disapplication of a suite of legislative provisions does suggest a lack of transparency. How that is to be implemented in practice will be a matter for government.
I could probably, I'll go next as well. Thank you very much for the question. Look, we are dealing with a very extraordinary bill that's asking the Parliament of Queensland to make a very extraordinary choice in relation to Games infrastructure. Appreciate that there is a significant public interest in terms of delivering Games infrastructure in a timely way so that Queensland looks good and everyone comes out of 2032 looking smiling, which is one endpoint that we would all like to achieve. And then the other side of that is, of course, allowing individuals to be able to resolve their concerns and their disputes, and also to make sure that there is the appropriate checks and balances of development and the programmes and progresses. And perhaps the bill as drafted is an extraordinary choice for the Parliament to make. And it is choosing one or the other of those two opportunities. It would be a useful thing if we had our time again to go back and see if we could choose both of those two outcomes without getting to that particular endpoint. We weren't consulted in the process of the bill being created, so we didn't have the opportunity to try and assist in that regard. But there are perhaps ways that we can ameliorate some of the most concerning aspects of this particular bill in front of the House. Perhaps that way of leave with respect to judicial proceedings might be one way, so that regulators and authorities can still do the work that they need to be able to do. But ultimately, I thank the member for the question, it is an extraordinary choice for the Parliament to make, and you are balancing some very significant two considerations in a very binary way.
Thanks, Matt. Mitchell, do you have anything to add?
No, content to adopt Mr Dunn's answer. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to the member for Mulgrave.
Thanks, Chair. Kate, how will the coordination powers in this bill, such as ministerial planning powers and fast-track approvals improve the state's ability to deliver the Brisbane Games within the required timeframes?
The extent powers that include the ministerial call-in powers, as you say, and the restrictions on the aspects of judicial review that can be sought, will... I think that the answer is probably in the name, that they are fast-track review processes. They are processes which do tend to take the applications as made and can be called in by ministers, by government, to actually see to the approval or disapproval of applications without the wholesale discarding of the legislative regimes. So it is not an assessment process as currently exists for approvals of this nature with respect to the Games infrastructure. But it is also not a complete disapplication of those provisions. It is something of a compromised position that is designed to ensure efficiency and designed to ensure that it is taking place faster than it otherwise would. Guarantees aren't something that any legislation can give.
Did you want to add something, Matt? No? Yeah, go to the member for Bancroft.
Thank you, Chair. And Ms Hodge, I'll bring you into this at the moment. The, one of the things we've talked about and that the Law Society's flag concerns about the proposed alternative framework for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander cultural heritage. Can you outline what your concerns are and what safeguards do you believe are necessary to protect those cultural rights and rights and legal obligations?
I'll take the member for the question. Cultural heritage for First Nations people is vital to our wellbeing and our mental health, and it contributes to close the gap. It helps preserve our unique identities, our languages, our traditions and our histories, and it gives a strong sense of belonging. The cultural heritage legislation in Queensland is already at the bare minimum. It already provides mechanisms where there's no Aboriginal party to which the proponent or the land user can proceed if they don't reach agreement. So from taking those stop-work orders and injunctions away from First Nations people, you're taking away their ability to identify what is culturally significant to them. So we have a Commonwealth piece of legislation with native title that has a stringent procedure that the court goes through, but this is the only legislation in Queensland that gives First Nations people the ability to say, "This is culturally important to me." And it's very concerning that there's a default plan put into the legislation, because it's essentially setting up groups in Queensland. We have a cultural heritage management plan guideline, but we don't have an agreement that's open to the public. And it might potentially create a standardised agreement that prevents Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people from having a say in their cultural heritage. So it's quite concerning to have a default plan included in the legislation when you already have the ability to proceed if you don't have an Aboriginal party. But the difference is if you proceed without an Aboriginal party under the current legislation is there's dispute resolution clauses. So perhaps in the future, in a couple of years' time, if an Aboriginal party is identified and cultural heritage is identified, then the Aboriginal party will be able to use those dispute resolution clauses to get into that agreement.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Kristin. Thank you all for being here today. I understand that the current planning and legislative framework has bottlenecks in terms of development processes that you may be experienced with, given your background. Will this bill assist in overcoming some of those current impediments?
I think the answer is yes. It'll help to streamline things, but the question is at what cost? And that's really the question. And so as Mr Dunn put earlier, it gives you a couple of very strong binary choices. Let's assume, for instance...
Just bring the microphone a little bit closer, Michael.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Chair. So a ministerial infrastructure designation, something that's been a feature of planning law for some time, does it streamline things? law for some time, does it streamline things, does it make things quicker? It does. Is it appropriate in some circumstances? It is. Can the government exercise that power from time to time? They do. But here is the cost of what's being swept away to achieve the outcome.
Thank you. I'll go to the member for Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. I think this is to the QLS as well. I think in your submission, you note that the bill doesn't adequately provide for public participation and I was just curious in your view, what is missing from the bill in relation to that and why is public engagement important from a legal and a governance perspective?
So public consultation is an important aspect of fairness and justice to the community. It doesn't mean that the public's views have to be determinative of the outcomes, but what it is, is it about in an ordered democratic society, the opportunity to the public to have a say? And I think Ms. Haywood Smith on behalf of the Law Society made that point well, on behalf of the Bar Association, she made the point well about what happens when people don't get the opportunity to be consulted. So I think it's fundamental and I think it's important for this outcome to be successful.
I should also add that with respect to, say, the wind farm and the solar projects too, they are also designated to be impact assessable, so members of the public will have an opportunity to make a submission and secure rights of appeal if they're concerned.
I was just picking up a point with my colleagues about the extraordinary nature of the bill, Mr. Dunn, that you referred to. Do you think if there wasn't the extraordinary amount of 1,200 days of time then under the former government, that we'd be in the same situation?
Thank you, Chair, for the question. I'm not sure that that's a legal issue in the circumstances.
I'm happy to take your advice.
Thank you. I'm not sure that that's a legal issue. That's really a matter for the Parliament.
Thank you. Member for Aspli? Member for Cooper?
I think, I can't think if I've asked this question of you or the last people, sorry, but I'll ask it and if I've already asked it, just pull me up. In your view, is there, noting the Chair's point about timing, is there still time in your legal opinion, view, to put a proper process in place that would still allow for a proper planning framework for transparency and consultation and appeals rights and still expedite projects?
Member, I'm no braver than Mr. Dunn in answering those questions. But my answer would be yes, but everybody would have to work very hard and very fast and there should be some changes to enable that to occur, but as you have heard, not these ones. Thank you.
Kate, oh, sorry, Matt, did you have something to add?
Thank you, yes. There is time ebbing away and that is a given, but there is at least always a little bit more time to be able to work on amendments to this bill, some drafting changes to deal with some of the civil litigation issues that we talked about, or alternatively to consider some of the planning, other options that are available. So, you know, the Parliament can kind of choose its own adventure with respect to this. But of course, time is going away with respect to this, but, you know, we could always work on some more things.
Yeah, I guess the publishing of decisions and prescribing consultation periods doesn't take six years. That can happen in quite a short period. Would you agree?
We have certainly seen some very short-term consultations. My memory was 24 hours was about the shortest one that I've ever seen. I wouldn't want to go back there again, but certainly stakeholders in Queensland are ready to engage on issues if there's a need or an opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Some of the submitters have raised concerns about the lack of consultation with regards to environment issues and also cultural heritage protection. Do you recognise that the bill, actually in its explanatory notes, outlines the compliance with the EPBC Act, the federal government requirements, as well as the obligation for engagement and consultation with stakeholders to develop a cultural heritage management plan? To each of the organisations?
We would defer to Ms. Hodge with respect to that.
Kristin, you've got the call. Your microphone, mate, it's not on. We can see your mouth moving. Yes, we can.
Sorry, can I just clarify the question, please, member?
I was just outlining in the explanatory notes where it refers to the requirement for consultation and, sorry, the obligation for consultation and engagement with the relevant stakeholders in developing the cultural heritage management plan?
Yes, so there are concerns with that because we've essentially got two Aboriginal parties in some of the areas, but my concern is that for the Games, a notice for a cultural heritage management plan will go on a website. So that means that First Nations people who might not have access to the internet, who live in remote and regional communities, might not get access to that information. The current avenue is done by public notice and it's usually including a newspaper, so there's going to be several people that are going to be disadvantaged from being able to participate in a cultural heritage management plan. And a cultural heritage management plan is a mandatory requirement if you need an environmental impact statement. So it's the only time you need a cultural heritage management plan and it protects you from any sort of litigation in relation to them.
Yeah, thanks, Kristin. The member for Cooper?
Thank you, just a quick one, just picking up on the Chair's comment about the EPBCA. It's my understanding that federal and state legislation do different things and protect different things. Am I, is that correct?
The answer is yes, and so state legislation can't, okay, sorry, Mr. Chair. So the answer is yes. So Commonwealth legislation can't be overridden by state legislation, so effectively what the bill seeks to do is override what it can and deal with what it can't.
Yeah, thank you. I'll ask another question. Kate, you mentioned in your opening remarks about an Olympics court as a novel approach. Is there anywhere else around the world that that's happened?
There are courts of arbitration for disputes in sport, obviously, and they've existed for a very long time, but that is different to the potential suggestion, as I say, as a novel approach with respect to solving a problem in a manner that might serve a number of different purposes, but I can't cite a particular type of court.
No worries, thank you.
Thank you. Always happy to go again. Mitchell, I'm just conscious that we've got you here and probably not heard from you as much, so in the time that we've got, is there anything that you'd like to add in addition to your submission in relation to the renewable components, particularly of the bill? And I guess some of the issues that are coming up there, particularly around the community benefit assessment regime perhaps?
The focus of the submission from QUEELA has been on what is required for particular development applications to achieve a status of properly made. Pursuant to the amendments, effectively, a community benefit agreement has to be entered into with the local government. That's a fundamental shift because in summary terms, as things presently stand for a development application, you fill out the right form, you pay the correct fee and you have owner's consent and you can make a development application. QUEELA is not supportive of effectively the extra layer of regulation that would see other requirements being introduced in order for a properly made development application to be lodged. Effectively, if there's an intent to further regulate particular types of development, there is an ability to do that within the current system through the already in place assessment processes. That's all we really wish to add, otherwise supportive, as I say, the submissions made by the Law Society and the Bar Association this afternoon.
Member for Cooper, can I add something to that? Thank you.
You can. Just state your name first.
Mr. Webb. Section 50 of the Planning Act has a heading, Right to Make a Development Application, reinforcing the open nature of Queensland's planning system. And the recent trend has been away from having barriers to entry to that system. Under the former Sustainable Planning Act, there was a barrier which required an applicant for development on state land to demonstrate that they had a state resource entitlement prior to making an application. But that was abolished by Act Number 32 of 2012, Section 41, and the explanatory notes recorded a policy intent to decouple the resource allocation or entitlement process from the development assessment process. So these proposed reforms facilitate a barrier to the development assessment system, which had not existed previously, a system which has been open for a period of about 13 years. And QLS has submitted that this barrier, which has no clear circuit breaker, is a move away from the current integrated development assessment system whereby government authorities are held accountable for timeframes and concerned stakeholders can exercise rights if those timeframes are not met.
Thanks, Mr. Webb. Unfortunately, the time for this session has now expired. Thank you for your presentations and your submissions. We are going to take a short break, 15 minutes, and then we'll be back at about three o'clock.